Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mrs. Fanna?
Here.
Dr. Modrak?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Arena?
Here.
Mr. Rosicky?
Here.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, on a nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Slunt, the Sunshine Law, please.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on February 5th, 2022.
Thank you. Now, there are the high school student representatives, Dan or Phillip, who would like to go first?
So, I'll start with the sports update. The baseball team is one of the few sports still ongoing this year. After a huge win over Pascagaw Valley on Saturday, six to five, the boys travel today to take on Old Japan in the North One Group Three semifinals. And I can update that they did win seven to five, so they will take on... They will take on Ramapo in the finals at Ramapo, I believe at four o'clock on Friday. The softball team's season wrapped up last week as they defeated Westmore Central on the road, five to two, to take the outright NJAC National Divisional Season Title, and they end their season with an incredible twenty-two and two record. The boys lacrosse team fell in the first round of their state playoffs after a good season two weeks ago to a tough Mendham team. The girls lacrosse team also lost in the first round of their state playoffs after taking down Roxbury in the preliminary round. Montville golf season ended strong with a third-place finish at the NJAC Tournament, and they finished their season with a stellar fifteen and five record. The boys tennis team brided their way to a thirteen and nine season finish. They took down Sparta in the first round of the state playoffs but fell in a close bout with Pascagaw Hills in the semifinals. And finally, over the weekend, the track and field team competed at their state sectional championships. Special congratulations to Robert George and his silver medal in the pole vault, and Alex Pilow on his fifth-place finish in the sixteen-hundred meter, and gold medal performance in the thirty-two-hundred meter, earning the title of sectional champion. So, good luck to both Robert and Alex when they compete this weekend at the NJ SIAA Group Three Championships. And we wish all seniors the best of luck in their future journeys and thank them for their dedication to Montville sports.
Getting into some past news, the MTHS Performing Arts held their Small Ensemble Concert with performances from the percussion ensemble, chamber choir, chamber orchestra, and jazz band, as well as others on Monday, May 23rd. Their Large Ensemble Concert with the band, orchestra, and choir followed on Tuesday, May 24th. Senior Breakfast was lots of fun at the mansion in Mountain Lakes on Friday, May 27th, with great food and a great hypnotist, too. On Monday, May 30th, schools are closed for Memorial Day, and senior prom was a rainy day that luckily turned sunny on Thursday, June 2nd, at Mayfair Farms with tons of pictures and dancing. In current news, this week is our final Spring Spirit Week with our pep rally this Friday. The theme days go as follows: Pajama Day, Motle Day, Wild West Wednesday, Celebrity Day, and lastly, Hawaiian Luau on Friday. Looking forward, senior awards will be held on Wednesday, June 8th, at 6:30 p.m. Because of the weather, May 16th, the National Honor Society induction was postponed. The May 16th National Honor Society induction was postponed to Monday, June 13th. And the Trium Music Honor Society induction ceremony will be held in the senior courtyard on Tuesday, June 14th. June 16th is our senior picnic, where we go to the rec center and receive our yearbooks. And lastly, final start on June 17th and last through the 22nd until the last day of school, which is the 23rd.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from our student rep's and board members? I would like to thank both of you guys for being here throughout the academic year, for giving us updated reports of what's happening in high school, not just in sports, but in everything. And I would like to wish both of you good luck next year as you enter the next phase of your education. And I would like to, this time, ask both of you to come up. Super Tennis Report, please. I took a little out of our program, but...
Well, that's okay. I mean, we were talking about our student reps, and they truly, these gentlemen have been phenomenal this year, so we are grateful to have had them and to have had their excellent reports throughout the school year. I am now going to turn things over to Mr. Natzek. I cannot believe that we have arrived at the fourth marking period, but we are going to honor our fourth marking period ShopRite stars this evening.
Good evening. I am thrilled to present our ShopRite stars for the fourth marking period of the 2021-2022 school year. Tonight's stars were nominated by faculty members in one of five different categories, and the winners were selected by the administrative committee. In addition to the recognition of these wonderful students, Sunrise ShopRite generously donates $1,000 to the class of 2022. For the final time this year, please join me in congratulating each of our stars this evening. In the field of academics, congratulations to Halima Naiz. It is unfortunate that at times, so much emphasis is placed on the numerical value of a student's GPA because we risk recognizing the real things that make a person special. I'll mention in passing that Halima has maintained a 4.4-plus GPA, but her other accomplishments are so much more meaningful and impressive. For example, Halima won first place in the color drawing at the 2021 Walkill Invitational Art Show and was one of only fifty students from the entire state to have her work selected for the 2022 Fresh Perspectives exhibit, and is currently the senior art editor for the Muse Literary Magazine. Halima is a member of the National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, secretary of the Make-A-Wish Club, and secretary for our Cultural Diversity Club. Regarding the latter, Halima was instrumental in helping Culture Diversity Club become officially recognized, and her work has led to a more inclusive MTHS community. Halima is also proud of her volunteer work as a teacher at our local Islamic Sunday School. In the fall, Halima will attend Rutgers University in Runsmick and major in cell biology and neuroscience on the pre-med track. Again, congratulations. In the field of athletics, congratulations to Josh Shuster. Previous star award winners in this category have been recognized for various statistical milestones or individual accomplishments. Josh, however, was selected for this award because of the way he makes our entire team more cohesive, more effective, and more successful. Our football and lacrosse teams have benefited from Josh's leadership, his work ethic, his consistency, and his ability to excel at all of the intangibles that very few people see. Josh is extremely dedicated to both sports. He began playing football in the second grade and lacrosse in the sixth grade. Throughout the years, Josh developed a reputation for being a positive influence among coaching staff and a role model to his teammates. He often arrives to practices early, leads layton, and gives his all at every meeting, every scrimmage, and every game. Josh puts just as much time to his academics as he has into his athletics and proudly maintains a 3.5-plus GPA. In the fall, Josh will attend CCM and major in exercise science. Again, congratulations. In the field of the arts, congratulations to Chloe McGarrow. The words that our staff use to describe Chloe include creative, energetic, knowledgeable, talented, and incredibly hardworking. Chloe's artistic talents are on display in our ceramics room, where she has spent every free moment for the past several years. Having completed all levels of ceramics offered in MTHS, Chloe took an independent study this year. In this capacity, she became a pseudo-mentor to students taking beginning-level ceramics classes, assisted Mrs. Flew with instructional strategies including the rocket firing, and explored her own interests in wheel throwing. Chloe's work is so impressive that it has been entered into several competitions around the state, including the Walkill Valley Regional High School and Mount Olive High School student exhibitions. At those competitions, Chloe's work earns first place, and she was even offered a $25,000 scholarship to the University of Art for its art school. Chloe is also extremely proud to have tried different things outside of the art room, for example. She has been an active member of our track and field team in the sprint, hurrah, and pole vault during each of the past four years. In the fall, Chloe will attend TCNJ and major in psychology. Again, congratulations. In the field of community service, congratulations to William Lucas. Community service can come in many forms and benefit a variety of causes. Sometimes the simplest of gestures can have a huge impact. This is particularly evidenced by William's Eagle Scout project, which was the refurbishment of the half-mile-long red trail at Camp Dawson. This project resulted in a clearer and safer path through a heavily-used portion of the Camp Dawson grounds. In addition to completing his Eagle Scout project, William has served as a troop guide and den chief for the next generation of our Boy Scouts. William credits his experiences in Boy Scouts with many of the problems that would prepare him for life beyond MTHS, including leadership, public speaking, problem-solving, and teamwork. William has also served the community through his active participation in Key Club and St. Pius. Though his volunteerism has meant many countless hours of hard work and determination, William is proud to have been able to maintain a 3.7-plus GPA with gains each year. In the fall, William will attend the University of Rhode Island and major in computer engineering. Again, congratulations. In the field of leadership, congratulations to Isabella Rudichowski. It's really remarkable that so much of what Isabella does for extracurricular activities involves her taking on a leadership role. Having the title is one thing, but doing the actual work involved is something Isabella does not shy away from. For example, Isabella, as the vice president of the Italian Honor Society, assumes the responsibilities of sending official announcements, organizing members, and providing weekly tutorial services. Isabella is the varsity soccer captain and assumes the responsibility of organizing and running center practices, strategizing lineups with the coaching staff, and also leading the team on the field. Isabella volunteers at St. Pius Youth Ministry, assumes the responsibilities of teaching classes and assisting in the office, in the main office there. In her capacity at St. Pius, Isabella took a role in leading a donation drive for those impacted by the barbaric war in Ukraine. Isabella's entire family ultimately joined the effort and packed an entire shipping container full of needed supplies for all those displaced by war, especially children. In addition to these activities, Isabella is an inductee into the National Honor Society, active participant in our peer mentoring club, and in our Peers as Leaders Club. In the fall, Isabella will attend the University of Miami and major in accounting. Again, congratulations. Our final ShopRite star this evening is an honorary recipient of one deserving of the award in the field of outstanding leadership. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Renee Rovtard. Dr. Rovtard is one of the hardest-working educators I have ever had the privilege to work with. On too many occasions, she is in her office by six in the morning and does not leave the district until her work is done. Dr. Rovtard regularly takes time out of her day to visit the buildings that she leaves, which is exciting and sometimes scary, but always welcome. In this regard, Dr. Rovtard will often take advantage of every opportunity to interact with our staff and students in a more personal way, such as catching a sporting event, concert, or playing basketball at a paparazzi, dressing up as Monty the Mustang, or celebrating the success of our seniors through programs such as ShopRite Stars. More recently, Dr. Rovtard has led Montville Township Public Schools through one of the most turbulent times in its entire history, especially during the last two years and in spite of a more polarized environment. Dr. Rovtard has remained transparent, honest, stoic, considerate, thoughtful, and decisive as she navigated our district through the COVID-19 pandemic. Throughout the last several years, our students were kept safe and received an education of the highest quality, under the direction of a leader of the highest quality. We are all extremely grateful for Dr. Rovtard's contribution to the school district and miss her presence immensely. Dr. Rovtard has applied for retirement and plans to major in hobbies, relaxation, and most importantly, time with loved ones. Again, congratulations to Dr. Rovtard and to all of our fourth marking period students.
Thank you. I'm genuinely touched. I'm trying to hold it together, but that was a very, very wonderful tribute that I will always share. Keeping it with the students, we are now going to recognize our valedictorian and salutatorian, Mr. Grau, Mr. Samford. And I had the pleasure of attending a dinner with these two lovely, lovely young ladies last week as all of our valedictorians and salutatorians in Morris County were honored. So, it is my pleasure to introduce and recognize our Class of 2022 valedictorian, Elizabeth Bazinoff. And our Class of 2022 salutatorian, Isabella Abanca Look. And we look forward to hearing from both of those ladies at our graduation ceremony towards the end of the month. Congratulations, a tremendous accomplishment, four years of very, very hard work, and we are very proud of you. Let me deliver the awards to Mr. Grau, and then we will honor our district retirees. Okay. So, the honorees that we have listed on the agenda tonight actually span a whole year's worth of time. Some of the folks that we are honoring tonight will be retiring as of June 30th. Some of them are already retired, but it was after we did our recognition in June 2021. So, unfortunately, not all of them are able to be with us this evening, so we will certainly recognize them, but they are not all present to receive their awards. Our first retiree with 28 years of service to the district, from Montville Township High School, Jeffrey Nally. Happy he was not able to join us this evening. We will move to Robert Arlazar Middle School. Having retired at the end of last October with 22 years of service in the district, Karen Jesterbis. Also retiring at the end of this school year from Lazar Middle School is a teacher who has given us four years of service, and that is Harriet Harris. We have a number of retirees from Cedar Hill School. The first retiring in June with 19 years of service, Julia Blayhut. Also retiring with 31 years of service, Catherine Klein. Catherine, too much energy to retire, sorry.
Thank you, everyone.
Of course, that person who retired in September of last year, Cynthia Nasty. Fifty years of service with the district. Retiring at the end of June with 22 years of service, Heidi Walden. And also bidding us farewell in June with 27 years of service, Lauren Monahan. From Valley View School with 21 years of service, leaving us at the end of June, Carvela Barbera. And our folks finally, from Special Services, Crystal Del Tufo, who left us at the end of April with 15 years of service. Patricia Striker, who was our supervisor of Special Services, retired at the end of December with 21 years of service. Kimberly Cluins will be departing the district at the end of June, and Kimberly leaves us after having given us 23 years of service. And finally, Nancy Masters, our secretary in Special Services, will also be leaving us at the end of this year after 20 years of service. And that concludes our recognition of retirees.
Why don't we all take a short break while we get some pictures, congratulate the recipients and the students, and we'll reach in in about five, 10 minutes, okay? Mind the way, Silas. For Dr. Rovtard, give that report at the present time. Dr. Rovtard?
Okay. Just a few comments. I wanted to speak to several issues that have arisen within the district since our last board meeting in May. As a result of the tragedy that occurred in Nevada, Texas, a number of parents have contacted me to request that a police officer be assigned to all of our elementary schools. I have indicated to those parents that the hiring of these officers would cost a minimum of $250,000 for the '22-'23 school year, and that those funds were not budgeted. I never indicated that the district was not willing to consider implementing officers at the elementary level, only that it is important that any decision of this nature should be done in consultation with the Montville Township Police Department and based on their recommendations in terms of the best practices for enhancing school security. This district has an excellent working relationship with the police department and have consistently worked to implement their recommendations. For example, several years ago, we stopped allowing parents in the building to drop off forgotten lunches, musical instruments, textbooks, whatever. We created daily visitor lists so we know who is expected because they have a scheduled appointment at a school. We've upgraded our security cameras, which provide coverage both inside and outside of the building. The conversation with Chief Caggianno on this topic has been initiated, and adding classroom officers is certainly consideration. There may be other approaches to securing our buildings that might be more effective, and we're considering those options as well. One such option is the reconfiguration of our building entrances to include what is referred to as a man trap or double entrance. The district had already planned this type of construction at Lazar, and that project will be completed this summer. I will certainly update the school community as these discussions on school security proceed. There was some concern last week when the district shifted our protocol on contact tracing to include a test-to-stay option that would allow unvaccinated students to remain in school instead of being required to quarantine at home for a period of five days, as had been our practice. This change was made to prevent students from being excluded from year-end activities such as the prom or graduation. The test-to-stay option was suggested by the Montville Township Health official as a means to achieve this flexibility. Since the start of the pandemic, we have consistently consulted with the Montville Township Health Department regarding any major changes to our operating plan and have followed their guidance. The Safe Return Plan that was mandated through the American Rescue Plan does not require that revisions to the plan be approved by the local Board of Education. Some of you may be here to address your concerns as to why celebrations and ceremonies differ from elementary school to elementary school. Each of our elementary schools have their own cultures and their own events. I could provide you with a long list of events that happened in one school and not another. These differences represent many factors that have evolved over time. If a school has determined that in our pandemic circumstances, the changes need to be made to an event, or that it is not possible to hold an event in its traditional format, I respect and honor those determinations of the principal and the faculty members in that school. Finally, I want to address the issue of Lazar Living Lessons. Following the excellent Living Lessons program that was presented to the middle school students on May 19th, there was some uproar on social media that among our broad complement of speakers was a 15-year-old transgender student. I have seen plenty of misinformation about the Living Lessons program in some of these social media postings. Our speakers are never selected because they are victims. They are selected because they have faced adversity and a myriad of different challenges in their lives. These speakers exhibit courage and tenacity and give a living lesson to... These speakers exhibit courage and tenacity and give a living lesson to our students about using their own strength and courage with the personal challenges they may face. We have transgender students enrolled in our district, just as we have students of various races and religions, gay and lesbian students, and students with different physical and mental challenges. We value all of these students, and it is important that they feel valued. Having speakers which represent these various demographics allow our students to see themselves mirrored in the experiences of others. It also allows our students to build their capacity for empathy and compassion, as they will certainly deal with individuals who are quite different from them as they proceed through life. They learn how to be respectful and kind people. This is a life skill. Our Living Lessons program is an award-winning program, and most of our students consider the day to be one of the most impactful ones during their entire academic career in Montville. Later in the meeting, there will be an opportunity for public comment. The purpose of public comment is for members of the community to be able to make statements on topics affecting the operation of the school district. This portion of the meeting is not designed to be a question and answer session or an opportunity for debate. Any comments and thoughts that are shared will certainly be taken under advisement. That concludes my remarks, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Roe-Tarrell. Thank you, Dan Dr. Roe-Tarrell. On Page Three of the agenda, you can see a lot of outstanding events that have occurred in our schools. Please, if you lose your review them, they're quite amazing. You know, that's part of the agenda is committee reports. First committee is Finance and Facility, the chair is Dr. Cordellino.
No report this evening, Mr. Brown.
Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Dr. Modra.
Just one thing, you should all be aware that a number of curriculum are coming out for review. We're going to have a large number of them later, so Miss Wordring has been sending them out little bit at a time. Please take a chance to review them, and we can approve them later.
Policy and Personnel, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien? No, no report. Policy and Personnel? No report, okay? Communications, Mrs. Upman.
We do have some updates this evening. First, I want to mention that Sue Marinello, our wonderful district communications officer, received a scholarship to attend the National School Public Relations Conference in Chicago this summer. We want to inform everyone about something upcoming with the district website. The current website resides on a platform called SchoolPoint. That's been acquired by a company called Final Site. That SchoolPoint platform will no longer be supported beginning early of 2023. When Dr. Gorman comes on board, some decisions will need to be made regarding the design and format of the district site. On the Final Site platform, it won't be exactly as it is now. Sue Marinello is scheduled to attend a SchoolPoint migration to Final Site training tomorrow. That should provide important information as we move forward with that process. One more thing about communication. In May, as you all know, we had an occasion to exercise the district's emergency plan with regard to lockdown at the high school. Working with Sue Marinello and our highly-trained administrative team, Dr. Roe-Tar sent out five messages over the course of the afternoon in order to try to reach as many people as possible through the channels. The messages were posted on SchoolGee as well as through the School Messenger service, which allows voice, email, and text messages. One of the challenges that people should be aware of with the messages through text School Messenger, the text messages, is that they're limited to 160 characters, and they typically have to be heavily edited to be as succinct as possible. They did contact School Messenger about the ability to expand the number of characters, but there's an additional annual charge per student that Dr. Roe-Tar and the administration felt could not be justified, given that we also use many other means to communicate, including SchoolGee posts, that reach parents just as quickly. Dr. Roe-Tar expressed that, you know, she recognizes parents are often frustrated that they can't receive a detailed, blow-by-blow description of an incident as it's unfolding, and even can't get all the details that are desired when it's concluded. This is not possible, as we're unable to share information that has not been shared to us by the police administration. And social media, we found, exacerbates the problem, as there's a lot of hearsay and misinformation out there. As a result, Sue Marinello has recommended that we review the frequency with which communications are released during such an incident to provide the opportunity for us to see. We saw that social media posts began to grow roughly every 20 to four minutes, and perhaps if we had issued messages more frequently, if Dr. Roe-Tar had, we could have avoided some of that. So the communications are constantly in review as incidents occur, and I'd like to thank Sue, Dr. Roe-Tar, and everybody for constantly trying to keep us informed.
Thank you, Michelle. Chief of Defense Security, Mike Rappaport.
No report this week.
Delegates, School Board's Karen.
Thank you, Charlie. Senator Vin Gopau, the Chair of the Senate Education Committee, is holding virtual meetings with regional county associations for an opportunity for a moderated discussion of issues affecting school districts. Morris County will join Hunterden, Sussex, and Warren on July 6th at 6:00 p.m. Anyone interested can go to the NJSPA website and register. And just a reminder that New Jersey School Board's workshop will be held in person in Atlantic City on October 24th, 5th, and 6th. If any school board member is interested, contact our business administrator and she'll register you. Thank you.
Morris County School Board?
Morris County School Boards will be meeting next week.
Educational Services, Mr. Lindy, Mr. Daughtry.
We're meeting tomorrow, Annual Reorganization Meeting, Election of Officers.
Drug Awareness, Mr. Daughtry.
Yes, so they're in the middle of their fundraiser for long science for the high school and middle school students, as well as hosting a breakfast on the last day of school for the eighth graders, as well as a presentation by Dr. Matt Bellis.
Athletics, Boosters, Mr. O'Brien.
The Athletic Boosters Mustangs had their last meeting in May, previously reported on.
Reyes on Cedar Hill, Karen.
I attended the May 18th meeting of the Cedar Hill Holman School, and there were reports on various activities, fifth grade events, the golf outing, the family fun night, Teacher Appreciation Week. There's a dine and donate coming up tomorrow at A&amp;A in Lincoln Park from 11:00 to 5:00. A&amp;A is generously donating back 20% of the proceeds. Treps was held this past Saturday, and I was very fortunate to be invited to the end-of-year Cedar Hill Appreciation Night for volunteers. It was truly an honor for me to attend and be with parents in person for, it's been a while, and also to just share some fun stories.
Thank you, Karen. Captain from Hilldale Valley View, John.
They had a meeting this evening.
Mason, Spannell.
Thank you, Charlie. So William Mason had their final HSA meeting. They discussed all of their end-of-year activities, their field day, their fifth-grade recognition. They introduced the new 2022 to 2023 Executive Board, and those parents are very, very excited, and they're planning a major fundraiser in 2000 next year, so hopefully everyone will come, and it was great seeing all the parents. They're excited to enjoy the summer with their children.
Would not, Mike?
Unable to attend the last meeting, however, the Volunteer Appreciation Dinner is this Thursday planned to attend.
Lazar? Karen, no report. Mason?
No report, from the last report.
The next part of the agenda is public participation on any agenda items. So if anybody has a question on any of the items listed on the agenda, there's an opportunity to ask those questions. If there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Go move.
Second.
Any questions on item? I? J? K? L? M? And N? No questions? This includes K-11, which is in the venue. Okay. Roll call, Mrs. Spannell.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fanna?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Ms. Upman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. There's no need for closed work sessions this evening, no Section P. Section Q, any old business before the board?
I have some old business, Charlie.
I can't see everybody, so, Karen.
Yep, that's me. I have very good news to announce. The board had set a goal for Relay for Life, our board team. We had set a goal for a $1,000 contribution, and I'm very pleased to announce that we've exceeded that goal, thanks to a recent $100 contribution, and thanks to some money kicked in by my very own son. But we exceeded that goal with his contribution, so I really want to thank all of the board members for your generosity. All of us have at some point or another been touched by cancer, and so I look forward to seeing all of you this Saturday at Relay for Life, right here at the high school on the athletic field. Registration starts at 4:00, the event runs till 11:00. Towards the end, when it gets dark out, there's the luminaria ceremony, which is always a very touching ceremony, so I'm very excited and look forward to seeing you.
Thank you, Karen.
Charlie, do you have their old business? Yeah, Charlie? Yeah. So we all have received an invitation to an event this past weekend. Mike O'Brien and myself went to the Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh presentation. This is, HSS is a Hindu organization locally, and it was a teacher appreciation event, and it was very nice to see an organization that truly cares about its teachers and education in general, and you were, as I was, quite impressed by their graciousness and friendliness, and it was a very nice event. We actually got to participate a little bit in it. Also, I just wanted to mention MEF, Montville Education Foundation, will be awarding two scholarships tomorrow night, each $1,500, to a student who is looking to go into education. I don't know the names, I guess we'll find out tomorrow night. They are also planning their back-to-school night. Now, for those of you who don't know Montville Education Foundation, they give, they do fundraisers, and then they give out grants to teachers to develop programs that will be preferably multi-year events. So for instance, they fund the School of Rock, they provide equipment to the School of Rock, they, I think they gave Lazar a big printer, so they could print posters. So they do a lot of things for all the different schools, but they are looking to get more volunteers because they need to raise money in the fall, so they are planning their back-to-school night fundraisers, and would love to have some parents step up and help out. Okay, that's it.
Mr. President? I'd like to elaborate a little bit on Dr. Modra's comments. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. The ceremony on Sunday was very moving, and especially educational. I learned a lot by the invitation for a large portion of our community that Dr. Modra and I got to witness. I was absolutely moved by what I learned and saw. We were not just guests, we were honorees. Dr. Modra, for several reasons, and because I am both an educator and a board member. And actually, some of the students that I teach in another district were there at the ceremony. I really never experienced something like it. It is a very important portion of our community in an ever-changing world. This is not the Montville of 50 years ago. We are a very diverse community, and I appreciate the recognition and the effort that went into the ceremony by this portion of the community.
Any other old business? Any family comment, any new business?
As mentioned before, the senior class had a senior brunch, breakfast up at the mansions, I guess, on May 27th, I believe, and I was fortunate enough to be invited along with the superintendent, and it was a very enjoyable morning. See the youngsters coming quite happy and anxiously looking forward to the next few weeks of school. On Monday, the Memorial Day, Mr. O'Brien and I attended the VFW presentation program over at the Community Center. Very well done. It was nice to see the veterans. They run a vulnerable program every year, and it was just a privilege being there. On that Wednesday, as Dr. Roe-Tar indicated, we had a dinner, the Marriott for the valedictorians and the salutatorians, and I then was fortunate enough to be invited, and again, that was an evening where the salutatorian, the valedictorian reached high school, and the county was recognized. The youngsters spoke, indicated where they would be going to school, and it was just a speech by the county superintendent and also the president of the Morris County School Administrators. Additionally, I was fortunate, along with Mr. O'Brien, on a couple occasions to witness or attend the sports events for the girls and the boys, and as Dan mentioned before, the boys will be playing this Friday in the finals. It was great having the girls in the conference and also the county, and going all the way to the semifinals in the state, so. It's been a good couple, two, three weeks, and the next two, three weeks are going to be even more better, I bet, because we're honoring a lot of students, especially the week of the 21st. All right, since there's nothing else, we, public participation is section of the agenda is for those of you that would like to make any comments. Please, when you come forward, just give us your name, so we can have it for the record. Again... Can I hear everyone, sir?
Good evening, everybody. How are you? You hear me okay? Beautiful. My name is Chris Fannell. How are you tonight? Hopefully, everybody's doing well. First, my comments are not to be combative in any way because of the respect for the hard job that you guys have to do. And first, I would like to say, Dr. Roe-Tar, congratulations on your, I don't want to call it retirement, but we'll call it retirement. So just listening tonight, I would like to say that this is my first public comment in front of a board of ed. I've been in this school district for, this will be the end of the third year now. Listening to the comments tonight, first, thank you. I know your job is difficult, but there's some things that the school district needs to consider, in my opinion. First, you know, Dr. Roe-Tar, you mentioned $250,000 for the implementation of police officers in our school. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, so my apologies, but, you know, $250,000 for the implementation of school officers in our schools. I don't know how many students there are, and I know I can't ask questions, but let's assume there's 2,500 students in the district. That's $100 per student. All three of my children play sports, so I appreciate the new fields and everything that are going in. I'm sure my kids will use them, nothing against that, but I'm sure that was a many, many multimillion-dollar project. I don't think it's out of the question for us to consider $250,000 a year for the safety of our students, so that's something I would love for you to consider. I would also like to say that it is very disappointing to see this crowd here because I see... because I see maybe a hundred people. We need to do better as parents. You know, this auditorium should be filled. So my hope is that we will see additional parents in the future. My last comment is going to be around class size. I don't know what is being done to address the class size of our schools, but I feel that it is too large. Just about every one of the classes in, my kids go to Valley View, are well over twenty students, twenty-two, twenty-three students. And I understand it's within the guidelines of the board education maximums in a classroom. But I would say that most parents in this room and in this community moved to this district because of our outstanding school system. And I think we can do a little bit better with classroom sizes. So I would ask you to consider a way to reduce our classroom size to give our students a better education. Thank you so much and have a great evening.
Good evening. My name is Diana Tool. I had--
Can you speak directly?
Sure thing. My name is Diana Tool. I had two comments. One is in terms of the rankings with the U.S. News. I see we dropped seventeen spots. So we are out of that top twenty percent from 2021. We went from seventy to eighty-seven. I am hopeful that we're going to hear about some type of assessment or plan of how to improve those rankings. I think that's critical. I know for me, one of the reasons I moved to this town was for the school system. So to see that significant drop, I'm sure is concern for all. So hopefully, we'll see some kind of assessment to see where those gaps are in education so that we can move forward and improve those rankings. I'm sure it's a concern, I would hope it's a concern for all. My second comment is regarding the test today. I saw in the email for June 1st that it was for unvaccinated children. And given the fact that the pandemic is obviously over, as stated by the CDC, I would like to know why there is a specific focus on unvaccinated when it's clear by all of the medical journals that the transmission rates are no different between vaccinated and unvaccinated and that the old vaccine does not work for the current variant. So if there could be a follow-up email or some kind of clarification that makes clinical sense as to why there is some discrimination towards the unvaccinated versus vaccinated, I would love to see that. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marla Luciano. And before I begin speaking today, I'm really glad to hear Dr. Rovatar speak about respect and tolerance. Because the last speaker that was speaking, there were several in this crowd that were cackling and making comments. I'm not sure how we can expect better from our children when the adults in the room are behaving in the most disrespectful manner. I hope I get better than that. As you so eloquently said, Dr. Rovatar, on May 19th this year, a fifteen-year-old young person came to speak to our Lazar Middle School students under the program Living Lessons, Living Lesson Program. This program, as she explained, is intended to have people who have survived extreme adverse events talk about their journey. It's typically incredibly inspiring. However, I'm not sure if all of you are aware, but the individual that came, Rebecca Rusoff, I believe that's how you say her name, went onto social media and publicly posted the following. I'm going to quote her directly. "Among other things, I challenge the students to ask their librarians for LGBTQ+ inclusive book recommendations and read them." She is a self-proclaimed activist. "We know children are more susceptible to what other children say and do. We know that they're more susceptible to peer pressure." This young man right here, some of you may recognize him. His name is Nicholas Sanderman. He's a high school student that was at the March of Life event in Washington, D.C. a few years back. He was wrongfully labeled a racist, a bigot by several national media outlets, including CNN, NBC, Washington Post. He was bullied on a daily basis, death threats. He, like Rebecca, was a child activist. But can you imagine the outrage we'd have had he been invited to speak? Can you imagine if Nicholas came to our school under the same program and advocated for our students to tell the librarian to have more pro-life inclusive books and then tell them to read it? He sued NBC, Washington Post, and CNN for $250 million. And of course, I would never advocate that anyone school our town or district for $250 million. But I do think there needs to be accountability. We should not have activists of any sort on any side of the aisle telling our children what books to read and what the librarians should be ordering. The teacher who is in charge of the Living Lesson Program, in my opinion, should be removed. And now, see, this is exactly it. See, this is exactly it. We're teaching tolerance. We're teaching tolerance. It's my turn to speak, but you may--
Hey, hey, hey. Time out. Time out.
Yes.
Please address the board, okay?
Thank you.
Is it necessary to go after members of the public?
Absolutely. I'm going to tell you this much, despite the cackling-- thank you, sir. Despite the cackling, if there's no significant consequence, I believe there's going to be far more than just me at the next meeting. And just recall how the media salivated over Nicholas Sanderman's story. Can you imagine what they would do if they heard about what's going on in Montville? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sherri Steffer.
Into the mic, please.
I am here. I-- I was waiting to talk to a little bit further away. I publicly want to thank all of you for the hard work that you and all of the organizers did for our Living Lessons program. I have heard nothing but wonderful reports from parents, from students, about how impactful this program was. And I also, as we hear now, am given to understand that there has been some real discontent with a transgender student who spoke. Sadly, chaos and control is trying to disrupt the teaching of our children of tolerance. And sadly, this child, I am sorry to report, has been receiving death threats because of what happened in this town. That is not acceptable. The anger and the venom and the vitriol needs to stop. You may not like what this child stands for. She has parents. She is deserving of dignity and respect from all of us. You don't have to agree with her. But we, as an educated society, have an obligation to listen. You need to understand somebody before you pass judgment. And in order to understand somebody, you have to listen to them. My husband and I just recently took a trip down south. And one of the places we visited was the lunch counters down south where blacks had to post sit-ins because they were not allowed to sit at a restaurant and eat. And I was reading the placards, and they were saying, "This happened in my lifetime." I find that shocking. I still cannot believe that that happened in my life. And I came home to this. The same thing is happening now in my community. And I find that unacceptable. You don't have to like what she stands for. You don't have to agree what she stands for. But we have an obligation to be tolerant. I hope that those of us in this room make an effort to try and be more understanding of what a trans person goes through. I will honestly admit, this is a new concept to me. I did not grow up with it. I am not familiar with it. But I believe it's my responsibility as a member of society to find out more about it. And my husband and I also watched a series that I encourage everybody to watch. I can't remember whether it's on Netflix or Amazon Prime. It's called Always Jane. And it is a story of a family going through a transition, always Jane. The family is from Spartan, New Jersey. It's a four-part docu-series. The family happens to be very staunch conservative Republicans. They amazed me. I am in awe of them. What they did for their child and what they went through is unimaginable. I learned a lot from watching it, and I hope that you guys do as well. Again, I thank you for all that you've done.
Good evening. Before I make my comments first, can I get a round of applause for all the retirees, especially-- especially our teacher, Karen Jay? Round of applause for her. Also, round of applause for Dr. Rovatar. Renee, I've told you this before, and I will not compete with Ken's words, but I've worked for a bunch of superintendents, and it's truly been a blessing to work for you, especially with your leadership through the pandemic and what we've been through and what I've been through personally and even what I'm about to speak about. So I thank you, I wish you luck, and you'll be missed for sure.
My name is Mike Rashudo, and I am the principal of Robert Lazar Middle School. I was very much hoping that I would not have to speak tonight. My hope was that the unfortunate ignorance and prejudice that was spewed on social media would not make its way to this microphone. Unfortunately, my hope was ill-fated. I stand before you as a proud member of this district. I am proud of our Living Lessons program, and I am proud of our students. I'm also proud of the One Montville movement and its message of inclusivity and respect. I am proud of our district's goals, promoting mindfulness and mental health. Living Lessons embraces those who display compassion, courage, and understanding. The speakers do not promote an agenda away of life-- no, not in the least. Rather, each and every one of them promotes kindness and overcoming adversity. That's it. That is their message, that no matter who you meet along the way, meet them with kindness. No matter what challenges you face, face them with resilience. However, over the past few weeks, many words of discontent and intolerance were spoken or written. As is often the case, the most vocal are often the most misinformed. We actually reached out to the young man you mentioned, and he didn't respond to us, just so you know. We invite everyone to Living Lessons, all sides, all religions, all colors, and so on. These people, these vocal members of our community are misinformed and ignorant to the facts of what actually took place. And they are also often misled by the talking points of the individuals that would rather grow to power through a vacuum of fear and to have an honest and open conversation about the actual events and not hearsay. At the core, a lack of information is at the root of this supposed controversy. The words activist and indoctrinate were used repeatedly online. But their use is based on a lack of knowledge. Using these words is a choice, and they are chosen with a very specific purpose. They are chosen to stir fear and discomfort. If the individuals knew what Living Lessons was really about, if they had actually had taken the time to ask, to reach out to anyone at the school, and more importantly, to truly understand the message of Rebecca, the speaker in question, or any of our speakers, then and only then would they have a true understanding of what took place and continues to recur every day at Lazar. Before continuing, I'd like to define a few words. Indoctrination. To teach someone a set of beliefs so thoroughly that they do not accept any other ideas. Let me read that again. "To teach someone a set of beliefs so thoroughly that they do not accept any other ideas." Isn't it ironic that the very people online railing against indoctrination are actually emulating the definition of the word? To continue with some definitions. Activist. A person who uses or supports strong actions such as public protest in support of or opposition to one side of a controversial issue. Advocate. A person who publicly supports another's rights or message, the actual word used during Rebecca's presentation. If one understands these definitions and knows Rebecca's message to be kind, inclusive, and compassionate, then a reasonable person can only conclude that Rebecca is an advocate, not an activist. Rebecca is no more of an activist than she is a threat. Yet because she is trans, and only because she is trans, she receives death threats as a result of the very actions of some of the people sitting here this evening. In reality, Rebecca and anyone else who receive hate mail, death threats, harassment, or other forms of intimidation, which include myself and Dr. Rovatar, by the way, are now victims of the very thing they were hoping to prevent, the very things that New Jersey has a specific law against. Rebecca and others are now the targets of bullies whose agenda is laced with fear and oppression, which is simply evident in their speech and choice of words. After all, what are you actually protesting? Are you protesting her message or the fact that a trans girl exists? Rebecca and all of our speakers are advocates for all people facing adversity, advocates for overcoming the challenges of life, advocates for kindness, for compassion, and for getting back up when you get knocked down. Rebecca, a child, courageously spoke to peers about her journey of dealing with intense bullying and harassment, about inclusivity through compassion and nonjudgmental understanding. She was part of a group that included Holocaust survivors, former slaves, the abused, the kidnapped, and yes, the bullied. The theme of Living Lessons is to teach our children how to face adversity with kindness, compassion, and grace. As principal, my job is to advocate for my students, to lead by example, to show them that they would never be afraid, should never be afraid, or ashamed of who they are. To respect everyone and embrace all individuals, whether I agree with them or not. To give them opportunities to hear from people that are from all walks of life and different from themselves. It is also important that in doing so, all students feel welcomed and safe, that they feel represented, that they know they are seen. Lazar has trans students. Just like we have students who identify as gay, as straight, as lesbian. We also have black students, Asian students, Hispanic students, Caucasian students, students with mental and physical challenges, and so on. Protesting the spirit of Rebecca's participation is no different than saying that any speaker from any group should not be able to speak simply based on the fact of who they are. Doing so simply feeds into the ignorance and hatred we have seen on social media. I will not stay silent in the face of such behavior. I need to make certain that all my students, all of my students, both now and in the future, know that I am their advocate, that we, that you, are their advocate. To our students, I will make sure that you are represented, that you are supported, that you feel safe when you come into our school, and more importantly, that you are seen. At Lazar, we see you. There is no need to hide who you are, and there is no need to stay in the shadows. To the individuals who continue to perpetrate hatred online and elsewhere, Rebecca is not an activist, and she did not indoctrinate our students on any agenda other than a message of forgiveness, gratitude, strength, and resilience. Regardless of race, religion, sexualities, or gender identity, her message should resonate with all of us. In reality, based on the real definition of indoctrination-- I'm almost done. Promise. based on the real definition of indoctrination, I'm almost done. Promise. In reality, based on the real definition of indoctrination, Living Lessons as a program and Lazar as a school does in fact indoctrinate. Students aren't indoctrinated to be accepted, compassionate, and kind. They are indoctrinated to persevere, to be open-minded, and to care with respect. I am proud to be associated with this type of indoctrination because the opposite of any of those is unacceptable. Students are made aware that people have differences, and that just as there are different races, there are multiple genders, multiple sexualities, multiple religions, and so on. These are simple statements of fact that carry no bias or agenda. They carry no prejudice, no harm, and certainly no threat. No. We are champions of diversity and acceptance, and will not deny that people in our community, no matter who they are, have a voice. Denying their voice is to deny their existence. Such an action cannot be tolerated. Denying the right to exist is one of the first steps down a very dangerous path. I stand before you tonight to make it clear that not only do you have a right to exist, you have a right to be heard, to be seen, and to be safe. I stand here before you to let you know that I am your ally, that I will fight for you when necessary, that we, the faculty and staff at Lazar, will continue to defend and respect you. So now that everyone here is educated as to what actually took place and to what those terms truly mean, do you still feel the same way? Do you still feel that Rebecca should not have been allowed to speak? If your answer is yes, then I invite you to our next Living Lesson programs as my special guest, because it is clear that you could learn a few things from Rebecca, from Rebecca, from our speakers, and from our students. I would even introduce you to Rebecca. I thank the board of that for your time.
I stand before you tonight...
Judy, please tell everyone you're on.
Judy Gotthoff, Judy Gotthoff, teacher at Lazar. I stand before you tonight as an advocate for all of our students, for the Monville Township teachers and staff, and for all of those in our community who are so desperately trying to make their voices heard but are being silenced through fear, intimidation, and hate. I speak and stand here for every single one of them. I also stand before you as the co-creator of Living Lessons, and I am darn proud of it. And I'd like to correct any misinformation that has been spread across social media and to our community at large. Created back in 2005, the idea of Living Lessons was to help our kids, all of our kids, see the challenges and adversity others have had to face, and empower each one of our students to work through their own challenges. And by the way, I think we've been quite successful. I have thousands of copies of letters, 11 three-inch binders filled to the brim with more letters added every day of thanks, shared thoughts, praise, lessons learned, and how helpful the experience was, and what our students could use to help navigate their life's journey. You see, this program has supported our kids in so many ways and has taught them a myriad of life's lessons: to embrace differences, to be better people, to be kind-hearted, compassionate, and understanding. That is what every single Living Lessons speaker has done through their presentation, and that's what has resonated with our students over the past two decades. That is the point of Living Lessons. Now, don't think for a minute that I don't understand that we all see things through different lenses. I do. But I am so disheartened and ashamed of the hatred, the hostility, and the homophobia that has been spewed in our community regarding one of our speakers, a beautiful young girl named Rebecca. Rebecca's Living Lessons message was as clear as a bell. She was not indoctrinating our students or trying to turn them gay or transgender. That thought of indoctrination came from many of you. She spoke of her own struggles and how inclusivity, kindness, and compassion are the paths to make, to take, I'm sorry, to take, to make this world a better place where all people, no matter their race, religion, sexuality, or gender, are embraced and regarded as human beings who matter just as much as you and me. She spoke of being accepted and being able to live her life to the fullest without fear, without threats, without bullying, without stares, and without comments. She spoke of being her authentic self. Isn't that what we all want? Everyone in this room, everyone in this community, and everyone who spews their venom and discontent, it's time to turn the tide. Try something new. Learn a lesson of acceptance and compassion. Learn a lesson from the Living Lessons program. Learn a lesson from your children, from their teachers. Lead with kindness. Before you go ahead and hit send to post hateful posts on social media, think twice. Would you want those things said about your children? I certainly wouldn't. Help your kids to grow and accept people no matter their differences, and help them to build a world that embraces all human beings, not just those you deem to fit your own mold. I am a proud teacher at Lazar, and I have been for many years. I love my students, and I refuse to differentiate between those who are gay, straight, transgender, Jewish, Muslim, Christian, Asian, black, Hispanic, or multiracial. I love my school. I love teaching, and I love and admire every single one of my colleagues. I've always been proud to say that I live in Monville, but I have to tell you, ma'am, at this moment, my pride is darn hard to muster. I encourage you to think about who you are targeting and hurting the most. That would be our kids. I implore you to stop the hate, stop the threats, stop the negative social media posts, and stop the fear mongering. It's time to turn this community around and make it what it should be and what it once was, a place where every single person feels safe, where everyone feels free to come to this microphone, and where every single person is not afraid to be their authentic selves. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Crozier, and I teach social studies at Lazar. I live in Monville, and I found it a safe place to raise my family. But we cannot protect our children from the outside world forever. Every day, I teach our children about the events that shape our world, about people who are long dead. But Living Lessons gives your children a safe environment to meet people who are not like them and give them the opportunity to ask the hard questions, like, how did you lose your leg? What is it like to be imprisoned? And what made you want to change who you are? It is important that we hear from people who have experienced difficulties, not to necessarily understand, but to have compassion, because they will meet all types of people and should have an open mind. People who are different have dealt with bullying, teasing, taunting, where anger and misinformation push them back into the closet when all they want is to live their best life. There was a black man who spoke to us at Living Lessons, and he spent his life confronting the KKK. And his question is, why do you hate me when you don't even know me? It wasn't long ago that a person who stood up and said they were trans were arrested and imprisoned, someone who could be your child, relative, or friend. Let us educate your children with compassion where compassion prevails and not ignorance. Please be on the side of a safe education and enlightenment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone that spoke tonight. Thank you. I'd like to thank the principal of middle school, Mr. P., and Judy for their comments. If there are no other comments at this time, we thank you, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Motion to adjourn by... All in favor, please?